I'd like to call the meeting's order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I just want to inform everyone that we did have an executive session on November 18th, November 29th, and December 1st. Personnel issues, potential litigation, and property acquisition were all discussed in those meetings. Review of the hybrid meeting procedures, EJ.
Yeah, if anyone is, are these all on by the way, Ian, I guess we should have asked.
Yes.
Uh, anyone who's attending virtually, um...
Um, your laptop, like, is...
No, I turned it off.
Is anybody on Zoom at here?
It might have just been because I smacked this.
Is it Bob on the phone?
I don't know. How that would come from, the sound came from the TV.
Yeah.
Should I just keep going and see if that happens again?
Yeah, let's keep monitoring.
Okay. The hybrid meeting...
EJ, I'll mute in case it's my phone.
Okay, alright. Uh, the hybrid meeting protocols, anyone who's attending virtually, please submit any questions or comments using the chat function on Zoom webinar. We will read them and address them at the appropriate time on the agenda. If they're general questions or comments not on any listed agenda items, they will be addressed at the end of the meeting in the public comment section. And please state your name and address in your comments. And that goes for everyone here as well. Name an address.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you, EJ. So we have two resolutions to act on tonight that were not on the agenda that was posted yesterday. These resolutions are a surprise for retiring employees. We need to take a formal vote to add them to the agenda before we can actually adopt them. So I will make the motion to add Resolutions 2021, I'm sorry, 2021-21 and 21, 2021-22 to the agenda, and for the agenda to be updated and posted tomorrow in accordance with Act 65 of 2021. I made that motion, do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I need to just ask him on every vote he has.
And Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. With that said, Resolution 2020, 2021-21, Schuylkill Township, Chester County, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors in recognition and appreciation of distinguished service to Schuylkill Township by Madeline Harbison. Whereas, Madeline Harbison started in Schuylkill Township in 2008 and served in various capacities, including Township Secretary and interim Township Manager, providing Schuylkill Township with outstanding service. And whereas, Madeline Harbison has always been mindful of the interests of the residents of Schuylkill Township, and she has worked tirelessly to advance the quality of life in the township. And whereas, Madeline Harbison's willingness and ability to understand and respond to the needs and concerns of the residents of Schuylkill Township, made by a substantial contribution to the betterment of the township, and whereas, Madeline Harbison has consistently shared thoughtful advice and counsel with the Board of Supervisors, and devoted herself to the fulfillment of the township's mission. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Schuylkill Township does hereby commend Madeline Harbison for her time-honored legacy of dedication, enthusiasm, and outstanding public service given to the township of Schuylkill for the past 13 years. Further, it be resolved that Madeline Harbison be furnished a copy of this resolution, which is included in the minutes of December 1st, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it be resolved this first day of December 2021. Thank you. Resolution. You know what, I think, um, I need to stand up for this one, and I think we need to have Chief Fetterman stand up with me.
Or come up maybe?
Come on in here. I've got a pretty big map, so I think you should be able to hear me, okay. Resolution 2021-22, Schuylkill Township, Chester County, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors in recognition and appreciation of distinguished service to Schuylkill Township by Chief James Fetterman. Whereas, Chief James Fetterman began his career in Schuylkill Township Police Department in 1981 and became a full-time patrolman in 1985, and was thereafter appointed and confirmed as Chief of Police of the Schuylkill Township Police Department in 1996. I'm sorry. Give me a minute. Chief James Fetterman, by virtue of his commitment and dedication, commands and respects admiration of this community for his exemplary contributions and service on behalf of others. Whereas, Chief James Fetterman's selfless dedication and tireless efforts have touched and changed countless people's lives in Schuylkill Township. And whereas, Chief James Fetterman's work ethic and professionalism has inspired, motivated, and has set the tone for the rest of the Schuylkill Township Police Department. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Schuylkill Township is deeply proud of the dedication Chief James Fetterman has shown to protect and serve the residents of Schuylkill Township, and humbled by his loyalty. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Schuylkill Township does hereby commend Chief James Fetterman for his time-honored legacy of dedication and outstanding public service given to the township of Schuylkill for the past 40 years. Further, it be resolved that Chief James Fetterman be furnished a copy of this resolution, which is included in the minutes of the December 1st, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So on behalf of Board Supervisors, we'd like to present this award to you, and it says your commitment to excellence has left a lasting mark on each of us. Thank you for touching our lives in such a positive and meaningful way. You will be greatly missed. A heartfelt thanks from your Schuylkill Township families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have that, you apparently that I asked you to...
We have actually one more gift. Okay. Close! Close!
He doesn't need anymore.
So, uh, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we have a present for you, and it is a drive a stock car at the Pocono Raceway. Up in the Poconos, it's a gift certificate for that. There's all kinds of, um, other gifts that they have to offer, experiences that they have to offer, and you will have $300 to go and spend however you would like it to be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I love this hand too.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, Mark. She just said "journey."
I know, right? You guys can just give me a second to, uh, collect myself, I do apologize for that. Okay, moving on. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' November 3rd, 2021 Business Meeting, acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of November 2021. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the period ending November 30th, 2021, in consideration of acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
EJ.
Just checking for... Um, quick Treasurer's Report through the end of, uh, the month of November, and just a minor note, the Treasurer's Report was given as of November 29th and not the 30th, since the meeting fell on the 1st, we just didn't have enough time. Uh, so as of November 29th, General Fund shows a balance of $4,461,345, which is an increase of about $105,000 from the previous month, and an increase of about $340,000 from the same point last year. Through November 29th, uh, we have brought in 105% of our budgeted revenues, which is the first time in several years that we've actually exceeded our projected revenues for the year. Um, the biggest reason for this by far, the two biggest reasons are EIT collections and the real estate track, transfer tax collections are both up significantly uh, to the tune of about $450,000 in excess revenue for just those two accounts only. On the expenditure side, we spent approximately 75% of the General Fund budget. We're currently running a General Fund surplus of a little over 1.5 million to begin in November, but we do anticipate that that will be cut significantly November, or December's usually a pretty expensive month. Uh, we have three payrolls with buyout, cash outs of unused vacation, unused sick time, things like that. So that number will dwindle, but, um, I can confidently say with, barring any major unforeseen catastrophes, we will finish the year with a surplus.
Good. So there's been a motion and a second, any comment from the board? Any public comment? Is there any comment online?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two-minute reports, Board Liaisons. Susan, do you have anything to report? Mark, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, um, I'm just gonna quick summarize the Clean Energy Transition Plan meeting that we had on Monday. Um, that was the first official meeting, uh, after the grant was approved and everything, so, um, we met with the energy consultant, um, Paul Spiegel from Practical Energy Systems. Um, there was some talk about the East Pikeland Solar Ordinance they're working on right now, so that's gonna be the, one of the first things they address, but, um, there will be a meeting on January 10th with the East Pikeland Planning Commission, and if somebody can attend that, I cannot attend it, but, um, they'll be talking about the solar ordinance and how, and, and it would be useful to have, um, comments on that.
Send me an email, I could probably attend that.
Yeah, uh, I think it's a Monday, I think. We can talk about it later.
I thought it was a Thursday. Did you tell me that it was a Thursday?
No, I think it's a, no, that's, that's another thing, that's, I'm gonna follow up on that right now.
Apologies.
And, um, we also set regular dates for these meetings, um, for these, uh, the, the Board Liaison catch-up meetings, um, they'll be monthly on the second Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Um, so if anybody wants to jump in those for information in a more timely manner, you're all welcome to drop in, drop in and listen.
Can we add that to, um, our reorg, that position, that liaison position?
Yeah.
To the Clean Energy Transition Plan Steering Committee?
Something like that, yeah. I, I'll, I'll send you what we're called, they, they have to pick a name. That, that's one of the items on the agenda for December, I think.
But you understand what I'm...
Uh, yeah, yeah. A Board Liaison, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's, that, that was it.
Okay. Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing here.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to, um, say, it's not really a liaison position, or a, a liaison, um, uh, two-minute report. What I wanted to do is for our January, um, workshop meeting, I have an agenda item that I would possibly think would be a good idea, Danielle, I'm really glad that you're here, and Lori, I'm really glad you're here. Um, I wanted to kind of have a meeting where we could talk about all of the projects that we have going on in the township, so that Danielle can know what's happening in the township, Lori can kind of get up where we are with everything that's going on, and EJ can kind of have time to pull everything together between now and our workshop meeting. Um, do you guys think that that's a, a good workshop topic? Or would you guys be okay with that?
Good information session.
Yeah, you know, just, it, not just projects, but like, um, some of the grant applications that we have, and projects that we're working on, and things that maybe we possibly may need to close doors on, or maybe open new doors or whatever, you know, that kind of thing. But I think it would be a really good meeting, um, at the beginning of the year, you know, both Lori and Danielle on board. Would you guys object to that? Fabulous, so, if we could have that as an agenda item for our January workshop meeting, I would greatly appreciate it. And, uh, Paul, I don't know if you would be needed at that meeting, but we will let you know.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Okay? Alright.
Plan one.
Yes, I actually, I have a few things, so I'm probably gonna say yes. Um, moving on here, oh, Township Manager, two-minute reports, I'm sorry, EJ, I almost skipped you over.
That's okay, you have a few actually, and I'll, and I'll try to go through these quickly. Just a, a quick update on the Paul Lehman Drive, um, Drainage Project. It was released for bid on Monday of this week, November 29th, on PennBid. Uh, notice is also put up on the Township website of the bid availability. We will be having a pre-bid meeting next Wednesday virtually with interested contractors, and then the bid opening, the deadline for the bids is Friday, no, uh, excuse me, December 17th, and the bid opening will be at 10:00 AM that day here at the Township Building. And then, um, you know, bids will be reviewed and then presented to the board at their next meeting in January for a potential award.
Has anyone shown any interest at this point?
Well, it's only been a little active for two days, but it's received several inquiries already.
Yes, we have, uh, there's been several inquiries, uh, some material suppliers, et cetera. A running question that's been going on is the, uh, concern for availability for HDE pipe.
You had mentioned that at one of our last meetings.
Yes, and, uh, several contractors are concerned that if awarded the bid, they just wanted to understand what the township's flexibility would be with the understanding of how this would work. So, uh, we, we crafted a response to that, or to, we talked to DJ, we crafted a response to them with the understanding that if they submit a bid and it is selected, uh, that we would sign the contract, and then they would go and they would procure the, procure the materials, and we would then have a pre-construction meeting once those, once they're in hand, and then we would give them the notice to proceed, so that, that would, that they don't have to have the anxiety or the price, uh, increase of trying to rush to get this pipe, that they wouldn't have the time to get it at, you know, the eight, 10 weeks that's currently running.
Okay. Perfect.
Other updates, uh, Creek Road, I just received an update today from the county bridge engineer. The grout bag repairs are, um, are beginning. Uh, next week, uh, the contract, the Hydro Marine contractor will be mobilizing on Monday and start the work the following day. Um, that's about a week later than what we were initially told. We were informed that the work could take up to two weeks, but possibly less, so, um, so we're pushed back about a week from the timeline that we just recently, um, posted on the Township website because that's what we were told by the county. So it looks like we are looking at a potential date for the work to be completed and Creek Road to be reopened the week of December 20th. And I will keep you updated as that changes, which is likely to do.
I say New Year's Eve, I say, I say by the New Year. But that's just my opinion.
All of, all of the work that the board approved at the last meeting for maintenance and upgrades at Valley Park has been completed. The park reopened the Monday before Thanksgiving. And I'm pleased to report that the trail pavement project came in about 25% under the budget that was approved by the board. So it was about 4,000, a little over $4,000 under budget.
Good.
The last thing I would say, and I'm just gonna take a couple of liberties since this is my two-minute report, it is the last meeting of the year, that means it's the last meeting for Mr. McAvoy, and just wanted to say that it has been, from my perspective, um, and I think I speak on behalf of all the staff, it has been an absolute pleasure having you on the board for this, uh, period of about a year. Um, you brought a lot of fresh energy and perspective to everyone, and, um, looking forward to hopefully continuing to work with you on the Open Space Commission, but you have been a treasure on, on the board, and it's really been a lot of fun working with you, so thank you.
Thank you, EJ, thank you too.
You beat me to the punch.
Well, I had to, and then building off of that, I do this, usually the last meeting of every year, but I do just want to acknowledge all of the Township staff, um, for a really good year. A lot was thrown at us between still having to deal with COVID, between weather events. Um, everybody took everything in stride. I always and continually firmly believe that the greatest asset of this township is its employees who are very dedicated and committed and hardworking, and, um, if it ever looks like I know what I'm doing, it's because of them. Um, so just thank you to all the staff from all of the departments, and, um, and a special welcome again to Lori, who we're really thrilled to have joined our staff, and she's been a great help already, and looking forward to hitting the ground running in the new year with some new projects, so. I am done now.
Are you sure?
No, but you better move on, just before I think of anything else.
Okay, four discussion items, old business. Consider approval of Employment Memorandum of Understanding for the Chief of Police. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Consider conditional approval of Employment Memorandum of Understanding for the police lieutenant. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 New business, consider approval of agreement with the Cohen Law Group to negotiate the Comcast franchise fee agreement renewal. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Oh.
One of you picked, okay, Susan, Susan made that second.
Susan's got it.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the, from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider, uh, you know what, I don't have the amount.
Yep, sorry, I have a, um, um, what was that? Everybody, everybody has it.
Okay. Consider the escrow release in the amount of $216,776.05 for Polte Homes Valley Forge Greentown Homes Development. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
Just...
Go ahead.
Question, um, what does that represent of the total reserve?
Actually, I was going to just hand that right over to Paul, and that's usually one of the questions that we ask.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, don't worry.
Sorry to step on you.
Yeah, uh, no problem. So the initial escrow for the development was $1,420,795.59. There was a previous, uh, escrow release of $827,209.14, um, which had left a balance of, I'm sorry, I didn't do that in my hand, but it's about $500,000. Um, the, uh, Polte had requested a release number two in the amount of $272,000, uh, 2,000, $272,43.25. Um, we have reviewed what that escrow was, release was, and we lowered it down to $216,776.05 based off of, uh, the site conditions and some of the work that has been completed. And, uh, they asked for some escrow that they had already gotten the escrow for. Um, so the difference between what Polte Group had requested and what we are suggesting the board approve is $55,267.20, and the, uh, if, if that is approved, the balance of the escrow will be $376,810.40.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? You know, EJ, I keep forgetting to ask you if there's anybody on line, sorry.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay. Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consider appointing Kathy Lex as a full member to the Open Space Commission for a term set to expire 12/31/2023. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Your name is right next to this, but I think we all know what's going on. We don't really have to comment on that, so. Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion on the Countywide Act 167 Stormwater Management Model Ordinance. EJ?
Yeah, so I'll comment briefly, and then I may actually turn it over to Paul, so maybe Paul's name should have been on here. But, um, just wanted, there will be more to discuss on this, probably in a little more detail at next month's meeting, but we received notice from the county on Tuesday of last week, conveniently two days right before the holiday, so of course we didn't really see it until this week, um, that if the 45-day public review and comment period has commenced for the Act 167 update, and that is basically the model stormwater management ordinance that is, um, crafted at the county level, goes through a, it's art, I mean, the process has been going on for almost two years now. Um, it will then go to DEP for their blessing, and then it'll be transmitted to all the municipalities in Chester County, who will then have until September of 2022 to adopt it. There, there will be, it's not like they just give us the model ordinance and we adopt it as is. Um, there are some areas of flexibility where the board will have options to consider picking and choosing some things, um, but we will be required to adopt it by September of next year. So, the 45-day public comment period has started. We are required to provide notice to the governing body, um, and to the Planning Commission, so this has been shared with the Planning Commission, it is on their agenda for the December 15th meeting, um, for any review and comments, and we will, and we will, um, receive and accept comments from anybody, um, and compile them and provide them to the county as kind of our Schuylkill Township set of comments, and we have until January 7th to do so. Um, but with that being said, that's just kind of the procedural side of things. I don't know if, I know this was just shared with you all on Monday of this week, um, since we just got it, but if anyone has any questions at this time, Paul has been attending the last couple, um, I don't know, update meetings, steering committee, I'm not sure what they call it, but so he's a little bit more well-versed on the technical side, if anybody has any questions.
I think the Planning Commission had asked if someone could be there to present like the pros and cons to the different options. Are we gonna do that, and if so, um, I thought, I thought we got something from Kurt asking.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Is that something else?
No, that's the same.
No, he just asked if the township engineer would be there to...
Yeah. And are we gonna, because I, I would like to hear that as well, but maybe we just want to do it once? Is that the best time to do it for the Planning Commission?
Yeah, it would be, it'd be a good time.
So we're planning to have you at the Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, and I, and I did do a, a run-through as quickly, and I have notes if you would like me to discuss it right now, some of the, the highlight items that, that I've gathered, or I can wait for the Planning Commission meeting.
I'm planning waiting, because I can just attend that, I know they want to hear that detail, so, if anybody else wants to hear.
Bob, would you be planning on attending the, um, Planning Commission meeting this month?
I would not.
Did you have any questions about this that you wanted for Paul to, this evening?
No.
Okay, if you read through this and if you have any questions, I plan on attending this meeting, Susan and Mark plan on attending it. Um, you could forward those questions to us, and then we can ask Paul and have those be discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. That way, we don't have to take up any time tonight, you know, kind of, so that we're not like.
Then poor Paul probably didn't need to be here. No, just kidding.
I will.
But it's always good to see you.
No, no, I'm happy to be here. I will note that one of the things is that they have a brand-new waiver request that any waivers that any municipality would want to grant for stormwater management has to be approved by the DEP or the Chester County Conservation District prior. So.
That is not currently the case, right?
That is not currently the case. It's strict adherence. And that was actually one of the things I want, just want to say that they are adamant about the store, the model stormwater ordinance. I'll go into that in more detail in the Planning Commission. But that was one of the biggest changes I felt that the board supervisors would have.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if at this meeting, if you could just talk about some of the big changes.
Yes, absolutely.
And how this would, you know, affect everything that we do. And that's, yes, definitely a big one.
And some of the items do have flexibility where the township can go with, let's say, the bare minimum, or they can go to a more conservative nature. Again, with the, with the way that Schuylkill Township has dealt with some drainage issues and things like that, you know, you might want to consider some of the additional abilities to be conservative with stormwater management.
Paul, when does that go into effect? That permit requirement of the waiver?
We have to.
As of September 30th, 2022, the township will have to adopt a model ordinance. Now, they could take the exact model ordinance here, or they can put the nuances that are in here. If anyone does review the Article D, or excuse me, Appendix D, it's 108 and 11 pages. I, I, yeah, but I will say what they did do is they made red, yellow, and green. Red is anything that they struck from the 2013 model ordinance. Anything is green, anything that is green is something that they added to the model ordinance. And they do have editor notes all throughout saying like, hey, you can accept it this way, you can accept it this way. So I thought they made that very handy. Anything that is yellow is just a signalization to the township to facilitate when it is adopted. It would say like, blank township, blank resolution, other, just something so that when it is being prepared as an official document, it's easy to understand what needs to be specific to Schuylkill Township or East Pikeville Township, or things like that.
Okay. So the only thing that I noticed is on the, the summary, if you look at number, what is it, 23, it talks about riparian buffers. We also have a riparian buffer section in our ordinance as part of our NARCOD. What does that stand for?
That's in the zoning ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Natural resource.
Natural resource. Conservation overlay district. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, and I don't know what the right word is. That our zoning ordinance is compatible with this.
Consistent.
Consistent, compatible, whatever. I don't want, I want to make sure that, I mean, I understand that we can be more restrictive. But I want it, I want this to just make sense, that the two don't, I don't want poor Kim to be like, okay, which one of these do I follow? So, and have her scratch her head and go, you know, this doesn't make any sense, they're not compatible. So if there's anything that, you know, in our zoning ordinance and this, and I just was talking about riparian buffers, but if there's anything else, that would be my biggest concern.
If you could highlight that in purple.
Purple rainbow?
Yeah, we need more color. I would say just from a very general overview, I mean, we do get complaints from time to time from residents about how cumbersome the requirements are. Chances are, it's only going to get worse with this ordinance. They're not, it's not gonna get any easier. So I think we should kind of start at least laying that foundation so the expectations are clear that we are under, you know, an obligation from the county and from the state to comply with these regulations. And unfortunately, we have to pass them down to our residents, and they have to abide by them. And they're only gonna get more stringent.
We in all townships.
And everything, right, it's not just us.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? Anything online, EJ? Okay, resolutions.
Actually, Martha, before you move on, I did want to raise COVID restrictions. I guess I just wanted to find out what our thoughts were on COVID restrictions. We don't, I don't see you wearing a mask at other places. But is our board still thinking we need to keep the mask requirement in place?
I know, we're following CDC recommendations? Is that what we're doing, or the county recommendations?
I mean, we haven't talked about it in a while. When we, that's what we had been doing. I will be honest, I don't know exactly what the most updated recommendations are.
I don't either.
Yeah, it just, it hasn't come up in a while.
Does anyone feel like we need to keep masking? I mean, like, I go to the Y here, I don't wear a mask. My work, I don't wear, like, this is really the only place I wear it now? Is that something you guys feel like we need to keep in place, or is there?
I would, I would say that our current insurance carrier, our Wisconsin insurance carrier does recommend that from an internal standpoint, that we do consume into our masks indoors. That would apply to public, public meetings. That's based on the level of transmission in the county and in the township.
Oh, yeah, they, it's high rate of transmission.
But it is a recommendation that I think it would be different to that guidance.
And our workers' comp says that?
Yes, that comes from Delaware Valley Insurance.
How about unlocking the door to the front? Is there a reason why we're restricting the public still?
Well, we're just letting them in on a, we have, remember, we paid for a new access system. So we have a camera system with an intercom. So people can announce what they're here for. A lot of times, it's just, I'm here to drop off a permit. Okay, well, there's a drop box right there, you don't need to come in.
But do we really need that? I mean, for years, we had the public come in. It was a very open, welcoming place. I mean, it seems weird to have people standing out in the cold instead of being able to come in. There's still a door, so they can't get into the office space.
Well, one of the, the main things that that provides.
Was it for COVID, or was that something?
It was for COVID. It, well, it provides, it serves both purposes. But the main barrier that it provides is we are requiring masks in the building. So by keeping the door locked and buzzing people in, and almost everybody who comes gets buzzed in, but that gives whoever answers the call the opportunity to tell them, inform them that a mask is required. Because people are coming into the building and not wearing masks. So they don't get let in until they wear a mask, because that's what our requirement is. If the building, if the door was unlocked, then people would just be able to walk in without a mask. And then, you know, staff would have to deal with, you know, the frontline staff who faces the window is not trained in any sort of, you know, special interaction scenarios where they have to, especially if they're dealing with combative people who are resistant to wearing masks. We don't have staff that's trained for that.
Yeah, well, I guess I just disagree with that. I feel like we, we are, I mean, every place else, I mean, I'm not sure I understand the workers' comp issue. Like, the Y must have employees, and they all have workers' comp. And I work out next to people, there's no issue, my work doesn't have an issue with it. And now we're saying we can't even let our public into the building. I mean, you have a locked door between you and most of the areas. And I guess I just feel like we should be opening that door now.
We do let them into the building.
I know, but they have to be buzzed in. And I just feel like, I'm not sure why we're doing that. I think it should be a place where people can walk in, you don't have to be buzzed in, you don't have to get permission to come in. I mean, we're a township, we serve our residents.
And that hasn't changed at all, but they're still being served to the same degree.
I know, other municipalities have always had buzzers. I thought, I found it was very unusual that we'd never had a buzzer. East Pikeville, they've always had a buzzer. Charles Towns always had a buzzer. The Borough has always had a buzzer.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I disagree. So if everybody wants to keep the public locked out and have a buzzer, no problem. I disagree. I feel like for 25 years, we let our public in, it was never a problem. You know, I just feel like the public should be able to enter, we should be welcoming them. But if everybody disagrees, we can keep it the way it is.
Well, let me ask, as COVID lifts, is it possible to then say, okay, let's, let's keep the door open? If that's one of the big concerns, we won't, don't want, don't have people trained, and we don't want them walking in without a mask? Is that something, come springtime, we can revisit and say, okay, we're, and there's a light at the end of the tunnel, let's open it up?
You can revisit it at any time. I mean, this would be a board decision. It would have, it would have been nice to know about this in advance, since it's not on the agenda for discussion at all.
I'm inclined to wait to revisit it until transmission rates in the county go down. And I understand the concern Susan's raising about being an inviting, community-oriented place. But we are still in the midst of a pandemic, even if people are getting vaccinated and wearing masks and everything. So, I mean, I'm inclined to just wait until the transmission rates come down.
Yeah, I do like the idea of the door being open, we have a lock to the office. But, yeah, I can see what you're saying about, you know, waiting for the pandemic to lift a little more.
Yeah, especially with a new variant circulating, circulating.
Yeah, we've had.
So.
We had some issues in our office recently with yesterday and today, so.
Okay, so I think, I think in a few months, we can revisit this, and we'll put it on our agenda. Do you guys want to choose a date, or do you want to just wait? Should we say March or April?
Call it, call it March, and we'll talk about it again.
Okay. Can we put it on, I know this is really far in advance, but can we put it on the March agenda?
Pretty tight already, but I'll see if I can find room on.
Okay.
I want to ask, recently, we had a question about the FOB access to the office supervisors. Is that something we want to reopen?
So I would like FOB access. I'm willing to, you know, I, honestly, the personal files should have been locked anyway. That's an employment practice, it's recommended, you know, personal files should be locked. So, you know, I think that it's, we'd be fine for the board to be able to go into the back office, and those files should be locked anyway, so I don't see why we wouldn't get that access back.
And I think most of us here, we would only be going in there when you guys aren't there to like make a copy or get our mail. Are you guys, are you?
I don't feel strongly about this one.
Well, I would like my FOB access restored, but if nobody else wants it, you know, that's up to you guys.
I think it's a good idea. We don't want to have a mishap. You know, we need to get in there to make a copy or do whatever we need to do, get mail after meeting where we can.
Okay.
Are we allowed to talk about these things, you know, they aren't on the agenda?
I mean, you can discuss things that aren't on the agenda. You can't really vote on anything.
Yeah.
Okay, bring it up in, all right.
Okay. All right, moving on. Resolutions and ordinances. Public, we don't have anything going into the zoning or sound of. Consideration of Resolution Number 2021-17, adopting the 2022 Schuylkill Township proposed budget. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll make the second, and I'd like to propose an amendment to the budget. I would like to add $20,000 to the, what line item is that, EJ? For the, is it the, what's it specified in the budget as, sorry?
Fire company operating expenses contribution.
To that.
$4,11,540.
$4,11,540. I'd like to add $20,000 to that. I understand that the cuts came as a shock to the fire department. And I'd like to ensure that we maintain a standard of operation with the fire department that is consistent with what we've experienced in the past. So I think, I think it would be wise to at least consider adding $20,000 to the budget.
Okay.
A public comment.
Come on up, Rick.
Just as a clarification.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Just as a clarification, anyone who's listening, you're not adding to our budget. You're restoring money that you took away, a portion of the money you took away.
We are, yeah, we're adding, we're adding to the 2020 bud, 2022 budgeted item.
You already took money away, and you're adding some of it back. Our budget was already cut, and you're putting some of it back.
Yeah, I think what Mark's, what Mark's saying is, the budget was advertised.
I appreciate the $20,000. I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm just making it clear that everyone knows that our budget's still cut.
It's understood. Yeah, no, that's understood.
Cool, thank you.
It's, it's a change to what was advertised and published.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But it's, to make it perfectly clear, you're not putting back everything you took away.
Correct.
Right.
I need more.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do we need to, do we need to like vote on that amendment? If there's any more discussion?
Why, then, EJ, didn't you want to discuss some changes since it was advertised to?
I think it would be good for the minutes just to reflect the changes that were made to the budget since it was advertised. And there's, I think there's six of them, so I'll go through them quickly.
Great.
The line item for the cable franchise agreement increased from $0 to $6,715. That's line item 014041600. The line item for the township manager's salary decreased by $3,000 from what was advertised. The line item for, and that's 014051000. The line item for janitorial services increased by $2,000 from what was originally advertised, and that's 014091000. The line item for the fire company contributions increased by $20,000 from what was advertised. And that's 014115400. The line item for third-party code enforcement increased by $5,000. That's a total of $15,000. That's 014131100. And the line item for the group hospitalization health insurance coverage decreased by $15,000. That's 014871520. So the net change to the budget, I'm going to have to do some quick math with that $20,000 added, would be an increase of about $16,200 and change, roughly. With all of those changes, from what was advertised, it would be an increase of about a little over $16,000. And that's all general fund, no changes to any of the other funds.
Wouldn't that be $36,000, because we're adding 20 to the?
It was previous, without adding the 20, the net effect was a decrease of about four, a little over 4,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
So $15,715, maybe, if I did that correctly.
EJ, has there changed the budget at all as it relates to what we talked about in executive session regarding benefits?
I'm not.
The $6,000.
I don't.
Oh.
Is that also an incremental expense?
That is going to need to be added, yeah, that's not.
We can do that later?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm glad to have thought of that.
Yeah. That's it.
So.
Do we need a motion to consider as amended?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to consider the adopting the proposed 2022 Schuylkill Township budget as amended.
And this is resolution?
Resolution Number 2021-17.
You made that motion?
I seconded it.
Okay, Tim has seconded it. Any comments or questions from the board? Any more comments or questions from the public? Come on up. And again, state your name and address. We all know who you are, but for the record.
Good evening, John Maras, on the local land. Not having attended any of the budget meetings, and now hearing what Mr. Donovan is requesting for fire company to be added back to the budget, can you, as a board, tell us, the public, exactly what has changed in the fire company's budget from last year to this year, where you are now adding back $20,000 that was cut? As a resident, we all have emergency responses, and just hearing what the conversation was doing tonight, I'm still a bit, you know, surprised that the budget was cut. By how much, I'm not sure, because I didn't read the budget. So, but adding back $20,000 is a good number, I'm not sure how much should have been. So, that's our question.
I can't answer that.
Yeah, if you could.
I was gonna say, you have that in front of you, EJ. If you could answer that, that'd be great.
Yes, so the 2021 contribution of the fire company for the operating expenses contribution was $220,000. The advertised budget showed that cut to $160,000, plus an additional $11,616 for a new agreement with an accounting firm that's going to take over managing the finances, the day-to-day accounting for the fire company. So that's kind of a separate from the everyday operating expenses. So basically, from 220 to 160, and now $20,000 has been added on top of that. Another change that was made previously, the fire company's vehicle insurance was on the same policy as the township's, and the township paid for that. and the township paid for that. That was changed in March of this year, and the township reimbursed the, uh, they were taken off of the township's insurance and forced to go on to their own. The township reimbursed them for the cost of that. So that was an added expense to the fire company that was not included in the budget for 2022.
Come on up to the microphone, please.
We weren't reimbursed for all the insurance, we were reimbursed minus $2,000.
You were reimbursed what, sorry?
Minus $2,000.
About 1,700, something like that, yeah.
Seventeen thousand, we were paying 19,000, and you thought that was 2,000 worth of what you thought it should, would be, because we're not on your policy anymore. So we're actually losing $2,000 on that lawsuit.
That's correct.
Any more comments or questions from the public? Is there anybody online?
Uh, not with comments or questions.
No?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of Resolution Number 2021-18, annual tax levy for 2022. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Anyone online, EJ? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of Resolution Number 2021-19, establishing the 2022 holiday dates. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board?
So my comment is that I understand adding that holiday, and I think that's a great idea, but it would give us one more holiday than the federal holidays. So I think what could be a good idea is to make that a floating holiday, and, and then people could choose to take that day, or Columbus Day, or a different day. And then we would still have the same number of federal holidays, but people would have the option of taking that one if they'd like.
I'm going to pull the resolution up onto the screen. Let's see. Bear with me here. So we all know, we're all talking about the same thing.
I don't have any strong feelings about this. I, I thought it was fine the way it was.
So you would say, don't add June teeth, Martha?
No, I mean, I'm fine with the way it was written.
Fine with the way it is currently written.
Adding another, so then that we'd be up one over the federal holidays?
Well, there is one, there is a federal holiday for June to, June-
Yeah, but if you look at the federal holidays, there are 11.
There's a-
So there are things that we give that the federal holidays don't give. So if we want to make it consistent with the federal holidays, I'm totally fine with that, too, it'd be 11 and 11.
Are we cons, are we consistent with Chester County municipalities? I think that's more relevant than the federal holidays.
In my experience, 11 is usually on the lower end for municipalities. I've seen some with as high as 14 or 15 holidays. And keep in mind, our police contract, they have 12 holidays.
Oh.
So I think if there was any concern about, you know, a holiday being added to the non-uniform employees that is not added to the police, this would actually make it equal with what the police are getting as far as, not, not the same holidays, but the same number of holidays.
Well, we gave bigger raises to the administrators than to the police, so I feel like we're not always apples to apples. So I'm not, I don't think we necessarily need to do what the police, what we do for the police.
That's not, well, you just said it's not true. I got a bigger raise, I will, I will admit, but none of the other staff did.
Okay, okay, well, I didn't want to call you out, but, um, so I guess I just don't know that we necessarily have to do what we do for the police, for the administration, vice versa, because they're different, you know, the police have a specific contract. And I guess I just feel like we, one of the reasons we're doing this is to be consistent with the federal holidays, and, and we're now adding on. So, a, anyway, again, my view is, I feel like we should be consistent. If, if we're adding a holiday because the federal has it, that's fine, but then we shouldn't, we should take away a holiday so we have this, you know, if we're going to be consistent with federal, we should be consistent with federal.
I'm of a mind that we should be more consistent with the county than the federal. And the county, I think, has the same as being proposed here. Is, is that correct?
That's correct. Same number, same total.
Yeah, same total number. They're not the exact same days either.
I have no strong feelings either way. I, I was fine with the way it was, the way it's written.
I, I'm comfortable with the way it's written as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with the way it's written.
Bob, do you have any comments?
Uh, this might be something I want to look at, look at a little further with, um, comparison. I didn't realize, I, I'd like to see what the numbers are across the board. I apologize for not doing homework in advance. But is this something we can look at at the next meeting, or do we have to vote on it tonight?
Well, we kind of have to vote on it tonight so that we can get it up on our website.
At the next meeting, and look at it, um, more in depth.
Do we need this on?
From a procedural standpoint, the New Year's Day holiday has not yet been granted. And that will occur prior to the next meeting. So that's why this is always done at the December meeting. So it sets the holidays for the following year.
I say we vote for this, or vote, vote on this, I should say. So, um, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Bob, what do you say?
I said, I'll, I'll say aye.
Okay. Consideration of Resolution Number 2021-20, the transfer of funds. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? EJ, do you want to comment about this?
Yeah, I would just say that the resolution has been updated, um, the language, and I apologize if I didn't have a chance to change it in the Dropbox, unless I'm looking at the wrong one, I don't know if it's-
Sorry, it's in the shared-
It's in the shared, okay. It's, the language has been changed to up to 500,000 and up to 150,000 for the municipal complex fund. In the event that, nor, these transfers won't happen immediately, they need to happen before the end of the year. But in the event that some unanticipated major expenses hit, and we can't transfer these full amounts, I have to do something less. So you're, you're giving me authorization to transfer up to a maximum.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I think that's how, I think that's how we did it last year.
It is.
EJ, can you just tell me, how much is in the municipal complex fund at this point?
Yeah.
That's in the, uh, in the treasurer's report that we're giving in the Dropbox.
1.29 million.
And so why do we feel like, I guess I'm thinking we probably should be putting more money into roads and water issues? Do we feel like we need more than one, I guess I don't know what we'd be doing with the, the township building that would be more than 1.2 million. But it feels like our, we've had a lot of road problems, and maybe more money should be going to roads and water issues.
Mm-hmm. So the, the thought with, this is the first time that we're discussing an extra transfer to the municipal complex fund. We've, um, been incurring more and more costs for maintenance and repair. We've got a lot of plumbing issues this year with the age of the building, and the, the, we're going to need a new roof on the old building next year. There's a lot more, um, anticipated expenses for municipal complex improvements next year than in past years. And when I started, I was kind of told that the, it was explained to me that the goal was always to keep roughly a million dollars in there in case anything catastrophic happened to the building, um, to have a, a bit of a nest egg for potential major improvements. And then I was also told that it was possibly to build that up for, you know, a, a building renovation or expansion someday, which is not really, you know, on the table at this point. But, um, with the projected expenses that we have next year, that would dip below that kind of target balance range. So this will kind of add a little bit of cushion to keep it where it needs to be.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions?
Sure.
Tom Fortman from Vincent Road. If you're Libby, would you please explain where the money's being transferred?
Yeah, this is the, the general fund surplus. And now we have a general fund surplus of about one and a half million. We expect that to go down to probably around a million or a little less between now and the end of the year. December is usually an expensive month. We need to, we need about a $330,000 carryover to cover next year's budget. So that leaves roughly 600 to 700,000 in excess on encumbered fund balance. So that's-
Oh, you're Libby, you say how much is in that fund at this point?
Yeah, yeah, that's all, I mean, that's all public. The, well, the municipal complex is the one that Susan just asked about, that's got a, a little under 1.3 million. Um, and the Capital Roads Fund, sorry.
821,000, just over.
Sorry.
No, that's, thank you.
No, that's, that's your-
Well, it's taking me longer.
Any other public comment or questions?
We haven't been on line?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you get a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have any opposed?
Was, was there any opposed?
Did you oppose?
No.
Okay, yeah, I thought, I thought everybody said aye on that.
I didn't.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear.
Yeah, lost in the mass.
I wanted to give you the voice if you wanted.
Okay. Board announcements. The swearing-in ceremony for incoming Chief of Police John Frye will be held on Monday, December 13th, at 9:30 a.m. in the Township Meeting Room. Masks are required. The public is invited to attend, and light fresh, refreshments will be served. The Schuylkill Township Administrative Building will be closed on Thursday, December 23rd, and Friday, December 24th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. Friday, December 31st, in observance of the New Year's Day. The annual reorganization meeting will be held on Monday, January 3rd, 2022. That's weird to say that. At 7:00 p.m. as required by the Second Class Township Code. The annual elected auditors reorganization meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. at the Township Administrative Building. And we, and we, as required by the Second Class Township Code. Reminder, the Schuylkill Township Police Association Code and Shelter Drive will continue through December 31st. Items can be placed in the designated bin outside the front doors to the Township Building. Does anyone else have any other announcements to make? Does the fire company have something going on? Does the, is the tree lighting or something going on?
Tree lighting's coming up.
When is that?
When is it, 11?
Friday? Friday would be the 10th.
Is that right?
So it's December 10th? At 7:00 p.m. is the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company tree lighting ceremony at the main station. Okay. Any other announcements? Do we have any public comment? Come on up.
Does he have to say his name again?
John Maras, Glenn Ward-Glan. I just want to thank, uh, thank you all for doing your jobs here and explaining some of the questions that we do answer, ask from the public. I attend other public meetings, and you get no information back. It's just comments with no answers. And I, I appreciate, you know, my question to you about the fire company, and having heard the explanation. So I appreciate your time doing this job, which is somewhat thankless in time, but giving us the public response. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Is there anything online, EJ?
Nope.
Make a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.